I would like to call the Stanley County Board of Education meeting on April the 5th, 2022 to order. Thank you to all that are here in attendance this evening and to those that may be joining us live stream. We appreciate you being here and for your support of Stanley County Schools. At this time, I would like to call on Board Member Mr. Dustin Leisk for our invocation and the pledge of allegiance to the flag.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, thank you for bringing us together tonight. We pray for your guidance and support as we make decisions for our schools. Help us engage in productive conversation. We pray for peace and comfort in our community. We pray you will bless those in need today. Please forgive us where we fail you. In your name we pray. Amen. Stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Leisk. Board members, at this time, I would like to ask for a motion for the Board to enter into closed session. For Personnel Matters, North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11, Section A6. Student Matters, North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11, Section A6. And Attorneys/Client Matters, North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11, Section A6. May I have a motion, please?
Make a motion, we go into closed session.
A motion by Mr. Graves. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. This motion passes. The Board is now in closed session. At this time, Board members, I would like to call the Board back into open session. Once again, welcome to all that are here in attendance, to those that might be joining us live stream. We appreciate you being here, and I know that we've had our invocation and our pledge of allegiance to the flag. However, we have a special group here, and I'm going to turn this over to Dr. Dennis.
Yes, we have a special group, and the West Stanley Concert Band has been nice enough to come, and they're going to play for us, so whenever you're ready. Yeah, I will soon as I get there. Thank you, that was outstanding.
I thank everyone in attendance. Would certainly say that was beautiful. I wish we could have them here all the time, Dr. Dennis. It's great. Board members, since I have called us back into closed session, open session, I'm going to ask you if we can make a change in our agenda. We have three people that are signed up to speak, and I am wondering if we could put them right after our recognitions. Our recognitions are going to come next, and if we could then insert our public speakers. Can I have a motion to do that?
Make a motion that we modify the agenda to allow the speakers to speak earlier.
Okay. Have a motion by Mr. Graves, a second by Ms. Poplin. Any discussion about that? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Okay, then we have changed that for our public speaking there. That is passed. Next on our agenda is going to be recognitions.
Good evening, members of the Board. On March 24th, we hosted our 2022 District Spelling Bee. Eighteen students representing each of our elementary and middle schools participated in our district spelling bee. After fourteen gruesome rounds, we finally made it to the end to find our Stanley County Spelling Bee champion for 2022. Our winner this year, words that she had to spell included monopolize, lexicon, repercussions, morage, allergenic, petrifying, haphazard, and ceramics. That was her winning word, ceramics. So at this time, I would like to recognize fifth grade student from Norwood Elementary School, Catalina Andrade.
Do you want to turn around? You've got something right there, too. Let me get out of the way. Do you have anything for the NCAT scholarship?
It's in your folder.
Oh, okay. Apologize. Next, we want to make sure, yes. We have the NCAT Scholarship winner. NCAT is proud to announce scholarship awards for five outstanding teachers to attend a Holocaust education seminar in Poland this summer. The five scholarship recipients stood out from forty-five teachers who applied. They will be awarded these scholarships from the NCAT Development Foundation Holocaust Endowment Fund. There were five winners, one from Wake County, one from Clay County, one from Darren, one for Wayne, and our winner is Ms. Meredith Howell from Stanley County. Is Meredith here? Congratulations. It says, "The Development Fund and NCAT Incorporated maintains a Holocaust Endowment Fund in part of NCAT's ongoing support of Holocaust education in North Carolina. The Foundation's endowment scholarships for $2,500 each will cover the majority expenses for an intensive one-week summer in Poland in June 2022. The teacher participates together with two NCAT teacher educators also funded by the endowment and will visit concentration camps of Auschwitz-Birkenau," and you can pronounce the rest of them. I don't speak good German.
Treblinka and Majonic.
That's exactly right. And learn about the Holocaust and the cities of Warsaw, Krakow, and Lublin. I got those. There will be a special half-day teachers' education seminar in the Museum of History of Polish Jews in Warsaw and dialogue with Polish high school history teachers. The trip will be held by Rabbi Fred Gutman and veteran Holocaust educator Lee Holder. Rabbi has been a Holocaust educator for more than forty years and led nineteen educational seminars in Poland. Lee Holder is a longtime North Carolina teacher and member of the North Carolina Council of the Holocaust. And so some forty teachers representing more than twenty North Carolina school systems will participate in the program, and I want to congratulate you. It's a great honor.
Is there, can I also say something?
Please do.
I wanted to say, we have actually been postponed for this summer because of the refugee crisis and the current conflict in the area. So we are on hold until next summer, which, you know, I think was an open blessing for many of us to find that out. But I pursued this in hopes of the new House Bill that's coming up, and I don't know if you guys are aware of that, but I would like to call that to your attention. In February 2021, House Bill 69 was passed stating that North Carolina is requiring Holocaust education to be integrated into the 612 classroom, and also requiring that local districts create and implement a Holocaust Studies elective. Right now, I went to the NCAT Holocaust Gathering of Educators in March, and we learned more about the law and what's required, and right now, the NCAT and the Council on the Holocaust don't really know a lot about what's coming down the loop. But I would like to take a leadership role in implementing that, if possible, and I think that this opportunity would really help me make sure that it's implemented correctly with forethought and that it's high-quality Holocaust education, not just any Holocaust education. So anyways, I would like to extend that to you guys. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Each year, Stanley County Arts Council recognizes two people in our community, the Arts Person of the Year and the Arts Educator of the Year. I serve as the chairman of the Stanley County Arts Council. Last month, I was lucky enough to be able to award not one but two people for being named Arts People of the Year for 2022. Kent and Ed Naharki were those that were selected this year, and even though they are not educators anymore, they do a lot for our students. They are very heavily involved with our cultural education program when our students take field trips to the arts programs at the Aggressivics Center. But the Fine Arts Educator of the Year Award is affectionately known as the Jim Kennedy Award in loving memory of longtime arts advocate, teacher, and coach, Mr. James D. Kennedy. This award recognizes a fine arts teacher in the Stanley County Public School System who has made a significant positive impact on the arts and education and has inspired students to pursue art, appreciate, and respect the fine arts. Along with the award, the selected teacher also receives a $250 grant to use for his or her classroom supplies and projects. At this time, I would like to recognize Ms. Renee Van Horn, Executive Director of the Stanley County Arts Council, and Ms. Anne McLendon, Principal at West Stanley High School, to join me for the award. This year, our 2022 Arts Educator of the Year is from West Stanley High School, where he teaches art, Mr. Randy Feike.
For those of you receiving awards, from our spelling bee winner to Ms. Meredith Howell, Mr. Randy Feike, I know that our Board truly congratulates you. And in fact, I know sometimes that, sometimes you leave during this time of our program before we get into other things. You certainly are welcome to do that. But before I do that, are there any Board members that, instead of saving our comments for that, for the last, is there anything you would like to say to these people? Anyone? Any Board member? Okay, Mr. Graves?
Thanks. Two things, just on arts. I know we talk about this a lot, and it is a subject that comes up in the Finance Committee meetings, the Facilities Committee meetings, about AMP, arts music, and, what's the last one? Oh, physical education, of course. Gym. AMG. I remember, I was just, you know, visiting my mom, and one of the pictures that she has in her room is a piece of art that was in a school art contest. I don't think it was really a contest. I probably would have won. But no, it was this Western scene, and it was from the fifth grade. And then in another room, she has another poster that I drew for this event, and I actually did win the best poster for that. But I think a lot of kids, even though maybe a lot of us aren't doing art now necessarily, I think it's an important part of education, and we want to make sure that our kids aren't getting art on a cart. And I think every Board member agrees with me that we need to do better in supporting art, and so I just want to congratulate any teacher that gets into art. It's very important, and probably don't get the recognition that they deserve art, music, and physical education, all of that whole crew. So congratulations for the award and for the other award winners, too. That's a very cool scholarship that you got, and Europe is very interesting, Poland is very interesting, and it would be neat if other members of the community could even tag along for that. I'm sure it's going to be a powerful experience, so congratulations on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Graves. Anyone else? Yes, Mr. Thorson.
Real quick, for Catalina, I don't know if you know it or not, but you're competing with me, too. I was sitting right over there and spelling to myself all the words. I would have been kicked out in round twelve, so you would have beat me, too. My hat is off to you. That spelling bee was a fantastic thing. It made my week to see the kids so sharp, and it would be a couple nautical terms that knocked out some of our competitions, so, but you beat me, too. I was done in round twelve. Our art teacher, thank you for what you do, and that demonstrates the expertise we have in Stanley County. Meredith Howell, I know her from teaching with her for years. Is easily one of the most professional, capable people in Stanley County schools, and we really are lucky to have her. Congratulations on the NCAT thing, and you had me nervous for a few minutes there, talking about going over there right now, don't we? Not a good plan. But thank y'all all for what you do. Catalina, my hat's off to you, girl.
Thank you, Mr. Thorson. Anyone else? Yes, Ms. Pop.
I also want to congratulate Catalina on her spelling bee win. I have to write it down to spell it, so I probably would have been out way earlier than Mr. Thorson. I have to kind of sound out my words. And to the Arts Educator of the Year, congratulations to you. Those are, as Mr. Graves has said, vital parts of our school. And Ms. Howell, how does it feel to be up on the podium instead of your daughter tonight? Congratulations to both of you for your accomplishments, but we really do appreciate all the extra effort that you put in for your students and for our school system, and so to hear you kind of offer up to lead the drive in that, I appreciate that. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Poplin. Anyone else? Mr. Leisk?
Yeah, just real quick, congratulations, Mr. Feike. You must be really old at this point because you were teaching when I was there, so. He was very much a people's person and a very valued part of this school system, so thank you. And Catalina, thank you. I finished second in my school spelling bee, and I lost on a much easier word than those. There was a couple that I don't think I could spell today, so congratulations, and same to you, Mrs. Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Leisk. Anyone else?
Can I just add one other thing?
Sure.
I will tell you this, a lot of people don't think the spelling bee, you know, they sort of just say, oh, that's interesting, but people don't realize the amount of discipline required to win and even compete in a spelling bee, to make it to second or third place. But to win, it's all about discipline, and that is a skill that will make you successful for the rest of your life. If you can maintain that kind of discipline, employers look for people that have that kind of discipline because you will be managing people and leading people. So keep it up, and congratulations, you have a very bright future ahead of you.
Thank you, Mr. Graves. Anyone else? I'm going to just say that, congratulations, Catalina. What an awesome job to be able to spell, and I think you went up with some that were much older than you. And I can see your beaming principal sitting at the back. She's beaming from ear to ear from Norwood, Ms. Mandy Eford. So we thank you, Mandy, and of course, everything that's going on at Norwood. Catalina, congratulations. Mr. Feike, it's awesome winning that award. It's awesome every time that I hear the Jim Kennedy Award, because I was there, not only as a student under him, but as a teacher. And congratulations to you. Meredith Howell, I just had to speak for a minute. You know, my passion, teaching eighth grade, my passion was the big unit that I did with the Holocaust. And I remember traveling to every single thing I could soak in, and when I went to Washington for like a week, it was major. I cannot imagine how I would feel if I had the opportunity to go to Poland. So certainly, I hope that you are the one who steers up this and curriculum in our school, and you know that I'm certainly behind that. I appreciate what you do, and I just hope that you can come back. I know it's a year away, but I hope that you're able to come back and present to us. I mean, I would love to even be, you know, in a class or, you know, whatever you have that you can present to us. I would love to come be in your class with, you know, all of this, but let us know how we can help you in any way that we possibly can. Thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
So we're going to let you, at this time, those of you who received recognitions, if you would like to leave before the other part of our meeting gets underway, then certainly you can at this time. At this time, Board members, we are going to allow our public comments. In accordance with Policy 2310, public participation at Board Members' Meetings each month, part of at least one regularly scheduled Board Meeting will be set aside for citizens to address the Board through public comment. Each speaker will receive three minutes to present. However, the public comment session itself cannot exceed over fifteen minutes. I have three people that are signed up, and again, I just ask you to be respectful of that three-minute time period of speaking. I may, I'm not sure if I'm going to pronounce the name right, but Ms. Taquisha McManus is our first one. Thank you for being here.
Hello. Thank you for allowing me to speak and express... Can't you hear me? Can you hear me now? Okay. I have a low, low voice, but thank you for allowing me to speak and express my concerns. I am a parent of an Albemarle Middle School student, and on December the 13th, 2021, I went to Albemarle Middle School concerning some statements a seventh-grade teacher, Mr. Dennis Mobley, was making towards students.
Okay, Ms. McManus, may I ask you to do this, please? Can you just give us information as far as using your student's name but not bringing in any other personnel names or student names? Because this gets into a personnel matter for us.
Okay. So eliminate names, but express my concerns. Okay. I apologize. Okay. Yes, this teacher was making statements towards students. He had been calling African-American students stupid, gay, and crackheads. I spoke with the principal of the school about my concerns. While in his office, he did not take notes or anything, nor did he ask me to write a statement. The principal stated that he would do an investigation, and he would have to establish a pattern of this teacher's behavior, but in the meantime, I had to tell my child, if the teacher made any more statements, to ask to be excused from the class, come talk to him and make a report. I didn't feel like it was a student's responsibility to miss classwork, to do a job that the principal should be doing, such as going down to the classroom and seeing what's going on. I stated to the principal to go to the classroom and observe. He stated it would be impossible to go to the classroom doors, it would be impossible for him to go down to the classroom and take a listen, because the doors are soundproof, and there's no way he could hear through them. I wasn't pleased with the way things went, but I assumed he would look into it, and he had other reports to look into as well. On my way out of the office, I ran into a teacher at the school. I knew her grandchild and my son were in that classroom together. I asked if he ever complained to her about the teacher. She said yes, and she reported it to the principal, and it was going to be an investigation. Her grandchild asked the teacher to go to the restroom, and the teacher told him, yeah, to go to the glass room, go down to the bathroom, and while he was going to the bathroom, why don't you go outside and swing on the monkey bars? Now, if this child had went out and swung on the monkey bars, he would have been in trouble for being somewhere he wasn't supposed to be. So now, was Mr. Mobley referring to this child as a, excuse me, was the teacher referring to the child as a monkey? Certain things adults just should not say to a child, and what this teacher is doing is a form of bullying, and the school has a no-bullying policy when it comes to students, but what about the teachers? That's not a good learning environment for these students. That's not a good learning environment for these students. To be taught by a grown adult that's bullying them and calling them names other than what their parents have named them. I left that day hoping to hear back from the principal. I never did. Christmas break came around and I waited till after break to go back and speak with him. I went back to follow up with him and the teacher had made another statement to the student stating that he had heard that students had gone home and told their parents that he had been in the classroom talking smack to them. This should not have been discussed with the students. Again, the principal never took notes when I went back. He never asked me to write a statement. He didn't look at me and wasn't very responsive. So again, I didn't like the way the conversation and the meeting had went. I got up and walked out, went to the school board and went to speak to a lady at the school board. She took my statement, wrote it down on paper, and told me if I didn't hear anything to call her in a few days.
Ms. McManus, please, I'm respectfully interrupting here.
Okay.
Certainly, we all hear what you are having to say. Every board member here is listening to you. May I suggest that you go over to Ms. Dr. Keisha Khan, right here.
Okay.
Okay. Will you please give her your name, contact information? She will get in touch with you so that we can further do some investigation into this matter.
Okay. Thank you so much.
And I do appreciate you bringing it to our attention.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman Gibson?
Yes.
Make one quick comment. The reason why this is important is because when complaints make it to the board, we hear it as a board and we need to know as little as possible because we sometimes make the ultimate decision. And so if people have complaints, it sounds like she absolutely did the right thing. She went to the school and she went to the central office. At some point, it should make its way to the superintendent. And then if somebody wants to appeal that, then it would come before the full board. So there is a process and I just wanted to make a mention of that. So everybody knows that if you feel like you're stuck at a school level or it can be taken all the way up to the school board through a formal process. So don't feel like, you should never feel like you're not going to be hurt, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Graves. Our next speaker is Mr. Roderick Howell. I apologize if I said that wrong.
Hello, it's Roderick Howell. Good evening. I'm calling to you today about the Escher funds that have been allocated to Stanley County. I started this as an employee of a nonprofit organization and who wished to have a partnership within the school system and also other organizations that want to know how to become partners within the school system to help alleviate some of the stress the school system is facing with tutoring, COVID relief, and also art academia programming. I saw on the site where they had a vague listing of the information of where they're spending the money at. And I was actually wanting to get a cash flow statement of how the money was being spent so we could better partner ourselves or at least see where the money is from 2020, 2020 and 21. The 15 million was spent and the 22 million for this year that they have allotted where it's going to be spent so we could better align with the, or partnership with the school system. I filled out a form to get this information and we went back and forth. And then I don't know if it ever got to the superintendent, but that's who I was told by Mr. Terry Dudley that that has to be approved from. And it's been over a month and I haven't heard anything. My question for the board is, what is the policy on being transparent on how money in the, how money in the school board is being spent? Is there an annual report that's going to be released? Or do I have to continue to ask and request to see how the cash flow funding is being spent throughout the school year?
Thank you, Mr. Howell. Thank you. Certainly, we will follow up with what you have said with Mr. Terry Dudley, as well as Dr. Dennis. So thank you. Our next speaker is Ms. Jasmine Scott.
Good evening to the Stanley County School Board and the community. I stand before you as a representative of my community because of the lack of diversity that sits before me. Not only in color, but also socioeconomic status as well. As a society, we have learned to adapt to COVID-19, being a part of our everyday lives. However, we will never forget the lasting impact that is made within our lives, some more traumatic than others. Let us use our imagination and think of COVID as a natural disaster, a hurricane. Prior to the pandemic, with a consistent and traditional school schedule, the learning gaps of students was a major topic in the education system. Many students were struggling with basic literacy skills and needed additional support that we solely relied on educators to fix because it was their job. COVID strikes with little warning, excuse me, and we have been sheltered in place for two years. Now that the hurricane is over, we need to assess these damages, our students. The last two years have been far from consistent, traditional, or normal for our students. And that learning gap has now grown. Kindergarten to second-grade students are experiencing something totally new. And our current third-grade to 12th-grade students have been stuck behind a screen with little to no interaction with other students their age. And the classroom setting has become an unfamiliar place that demands structure for these kids. Students are now not only struggling with their literacy skills, but they are also struggling socially and emotionally. So now what about our students? We need to clean up and rebuild our community. Help bring a community engagement center or resource to the students in need that are struggling academically. They're dropping out of school and they're losing hope. We all have to cope and clean up the mess that COVID-19 has made together. So I stand before you with a solution because I have been working with these students for the last nine years, funding this program myself. Let's support the students as they recover by bringing a school-funded resource free of charge to these kids because many of their families can't afford it. Let's help the struggling families, the single-family homes, grandparents, and guardians who cannot afford additional educational support services. But they are told that their child needs help. Let's alleviate some of the stress that is placed on educators, which I was once in that field because I'm a licensed science educator as well as administrator for the North Carolina school system. And let's close or assist with closing past and present learning gaps. Let's show our unity for the school system so that we do not lose funds by being proactive in supporting students from dropping out and help them prepare for their future. Let's show that we care about our future, which is the students of Stanley County, which I am also a former Stanley County graduate from Albemarle High School. But I am also the founder of a nonprofit organization that has provided not only tutoring, but an after-school outreach program and college tours to students. So I ask you, Mr. Liz, as well as Mr. Graves, as you are asking my community for their votes in this upcoming election, what are you doing to help the kids that look like me in my community? Because I have about 40 families that have signed up for my services, but they cannot receive my services at the minimum price because their families can't afford it. And as I was in the classroom, that was always my job, to make sure that I educated these kids. They come to me every day, not only hungry for food, but also education. Some of them cannot sit in their seats. And I have the services that could be provided to these kids, but not the financial resources.
Ms. Scott, I know that your time is up, okay? And I don't mean to be disrespectful. Thank you for what you have shared, the information. I know that we all hear what you have had to say. Thank you. Next on our agenda, we have a community engagement and dropout prevention presentation by Ms. Melissa Smith. We are excited.
I thought these seats would be full by now, you know. I should have called my fans out. Okay, so Ms. Hope, I'm supposed to just push this in? All right, I appreciate you so much. I am Melissa Smith, Director of Community Engagement and Dropout Prevention of Stanley County Schools. And this has truly been a learning year for me. By far have not even, you know, I guess, just on the surface of learning about this community and all the resources that it has. And so I'm excited to be here on today. And so I will put my codes in so we can get me started. I did a PowerPoint presentation for you to just kind of sum things up and for the interest of time, you know, get us to moving along. But I would like to thank Dr. Dennis for even considering me for such a time as this. I mean, it is a very needed time and I thank the school board for approving that. You couldn't have done a better job. At any rate, I'm excited once again to be here. Am I on the internet here?
You need to be.
Okay. And so what I'm going to share with you a little bit today is my job description. I'm not just a person that has just been added as a layer at Stanley County Schools, but sometimes you see me out there. I'm a visible force to help navigate this path that you've heard a lot of the people that have come before you talk about. This is not a one-man show and it does indeed take community to meet this challenge. And so with our students, my goal is to use the resources that we already have here in this place, Stanley County, and try to bring them together so that we can all do for the common good to meet their needs. But before I even move on to tell you what that looks like, it's not just Melissa Smith. I work for Student Services Department at Stanley County Schools. So even though I am really strong and I do count myself as very beautiful, I have other folks that I have to recognize because it's not just about Melissa Smith and this department. But if my direct supervisor, Beverly, can you turn to the stand, please? She's in the back of the room. Over to my right, you'll see Jennifer Flo. If you'll wave your hand. So this is the Director of Student Services. She's the Executive Director. There's Jennifer Flo and she is Safety Director. And right behind me, we have SEL, that's social emotional learning. And we have Samantha Manducha right here. Remember, we're just agents, but we need to pull all those resources together to help us. And so while they're working on that, I'm going to go ahead and start. I'll face you now that I've shown this long, beautiful dress to the audience. Okay, so now I want to turn my back to you. I have pictures here that show, you know, us united as a student services family, okay? And so it's more than just, you know, coming to do the work, but we have to network within the county office to be able to even go out and combat the challenges that we face in the community. So what is my philosophy of education? These are probably the two largest sentences I've ever written in my life, but I like the words that I've chosen. Okay, so what we're going to do here, I'm going to back up just a little bit because I want you to get the full effect of this PowerPoint that I spent time creating and you go and look at it. Okay, so here is Melissa Smith. By the way, Jasmine Scott, Butterfly Imprints girl that just sat down, she's one of my former students from Albemarle High School, a chemist indeed. And I always knew that she would be a successful person and we're very proud of you for that. So right here, we are a team. There we are, right there, working hard. I decided not to use students in the presentation that I know because I did not have, you know, permission. And not only that, I didn't want to, they're all equally wonderful and I just couldn't put them all in there. So I just put myself in there. We are a team. So my philosophy of education, now listen to this, you've got to listen and internalize these words. It means something to me. It's not just words on a page. It says, "My philosophy of education is that all children are unique, having specific learning needs and styles, and they deserve equitable access to skillful educators that advance powerful student learning in an enriching atmosphere where they can grow academically, socially, and emotionally." My college professor would have rated me down for that, but I'm here now. "It is my desire to create this type of safe space where students are empowered to lead, they're eager to share their ideas and take risks, accept change and challenge, and are in the pursuit of excellence in everything they do." That is why we are here and that is what I truly believe. Look at that turn. Okay, now, let's take a closer look at my vision. So what am I supposed to do? I am here to try to develop, implement, and monitor a comprehensive program that supports at-risk students. And we're trying to improve the image and the credibility of Stanley County Schools. There are some good things still happening in Stanley County Schools and our students is one of them. So we cannot forget why we're here. But how can you do that? You've got to create partnerships. You've got to be innovative and you've got to use a diversified range of constituents in order to be able to do that. Now, once again, I'm just one person, but I have the community to embrace to help meet this challenge. CEDP role, to be clear, the definitive role of the Director of Community Engagement and Dropout Prevention so that we can get graduation is to foster those relationships with a diverse range of educational constituents. We have enough help right here in Stanley County to get the job done. I just wanted you to know. I did not know this. No wonder you needed a community person. I go over here, I go over there. We got the goods. We just have to learn how to navigate them so that we can, you know, help our students achieve. We've got to collaborate, we've got to be innovative, and we've got to make sure that we promote service and leadership. And so to do that, we have to have creative project-based engagement initiatives that is like a strategic plan. We are working on that. Now, this year, I had a big old elephant in the room. No, I had 14 elephants in the room and I tried to eat all of them at one time. Well, basically, all I did was navigate this year. And so that's good. I don't have the measurable impact that I want, but that is going to be in place now that I have a baseline to move from. And that is going to be in alignment with our district goals. We're going to do it the Stanley County way. Okay, so what's my first goal? Look at that beautiful picture. I just love, look at it myself. Look at that picture. And so it says, "Create alternative strategies and new staff and talent." We've got to engage the community, but we've got to partner with them in order to benefit them. I named a few of the people. If you're in this room and you are like a, in some capacity, an individual or a business or some type of, we've partnered in some fashion. If you are one of those people that have benefited Stanley County School students, please stand at this time. I just want to see who you are. Yeah, let's give them a hand. I just, you know, we celebrate you. All right, go ahead and sit down. All right, but what I'm saying is, we need each other to get the job done. And there are supposed to be a whole lot of other folks that came. I guess the rain left them out. But there are a host of community people. And so of course, through events, well, we just had COVID lifted. So for first part of the year, we weren't able to really do a whole lot of that physical stuff. So we navigated around that. And now the storm is over and so we can now move in the right trajectory. Hand in hand. Okay, my next goal, okay, I love this part, the mentoring. You have to walk, you know, mentoring with students isn't just going to eat lunch with them. You have to walk alongside them and really work with them and show them because they know a whole lot, but to put it into action is a whole different thing. So, but you have to do it one student at a time. It has to be personalized. We went on a college tour to Fayetteville, and the students' eyes opened. The group that I took, they can't see beyond the horizon, but we can take them there. It's very important to, you get on that bus. I got my bus driver's license back this week. Lord, I shouldn't have publicized that. But at any rate, I do not, I'm not here to sell or try to get anything from the school board, but I do need a fifteen mini passenger van to go ahead and get students up if y'all could really focus on that, Todd Bowers. All right, so let's move right along. Almost done. We also do school partnerships. We've got to get along in-house before we can go out and help anybody outside. So what we've done as an administrative director team is we go into the schools as often as possible, not to observe and to evaluate and, you know, criticize, but we go in as boots on the ground. We go in with the principals and the teachers, and we work alongside them. So what are we doing? We're increasing visibility. We're building our own internal community. We walk alongside our family members, and that is very important. So we got it right on the inside. We're just working on it a little bit more, though. We continue to work. So for Stanley County Schools, we are indeed a one-stop shop for students. We need to, you know, we need to focus on the students' needs, and we have to be able to say, "You can go here and get services, and you can go there and get services," and those are the things that we're working on refining. But I like the way y'all stopped and celebrated just a little bit ago and took pictures. You've got to laugh. You've got to celebrate. You've got to enjoy. And that is what Stanley County Schools is indebted to do. So our responsibilities in my office, it overlaps. We're all in the room together for the most part, but we're working on the work. SEL overlaps with safety. Safety overlaps with, you know, community. It's just, we're all one. And this is a learning year. Once again, I'm unable to measure the real impact because the baselines will be set, though, in the summer, not on the summer, in the summer. I think Beverly typed that. Okay, so look at that student right there. You don't know that student's story. You don't know his story. So since you don't know his story, you don't know if he lost his mama to cancer. You don't know they have a poor family nucleus. You don't know if they're an exceptional child and need services, if they've been abused, if they come from low socioeconomic. You don't know, but we've got to help them. And you know what? Every student has the potential to change the world. I know I'm changing the world. And dropping out of school is a result of a long process of disengagement. It did not start in high school. High school is almost too late. You've got to start kindergarten, and you've got to work dropout all the way from the beginning. High school is late. Dropouts lose out. I'm almost done. Now, look at that. It says some, because I tried it. I was at the high, I go knocking on the door. Get up, baby. I got you a Dr. Pepper. I got you a meatball sub. Come on. Hey, you know what? They eat that meatball sub and lay down. You've got to understand, that thing didn't start overnight. So I'm like, come on, you can try to bring that horse to the water to drink. But if the families and the community and the school system don't get together, they don't drink that water. And it says, "Make the pool bigger." Hey, look how big this water trough is. You know what? Sometimes, you know, we lose and we fail them too early. It is our job as a community, as a school system, to pool our resources together and get them to graduation. Set goals. Stay in school. What does that mean? Set goals. Turn your mess into a message. Accept responsibility, and then tell them you can do this. Stay yourself in school. And finally, action goal three. I was going to try and teach parents how to parent kids. Now, y'all know I don't have any children, right, at the house? But y'all gave me a whole bunch of, we got about eight thousand of them in the community, so I'm excited about that. But I don't need to start parent classes. We have resources that are already out there that are doing family literacy. You got a U. Warren Bank already doing family literacy. You've got different agencies already working on these things. So we just need to learn how to navigate that. And so finally, that is it. That is my vision for Stanley County Schools. The reason I had to come before you today is because I wanted you to understand what my role is. It is not defined like an eight-to-five job. Ask Mr. Sean Baldwin. He'll have you come out every night for a community meeting. So, and so what I'm saying is, on the weekend, on Saturdays, take twenty-five children to go see Annie so they can be cultured, and then go teach Empowering Girls. Don't mess with Tamika Baldwin. My goodness. And so what I'm saying is, it's an awesome job, and I thank you for the opportunity. I am indebted to you all, and I hope that I will continue to do the job that you're expecting, and our children will benefit from that. So thank you, and have a great night.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. You are certainly beautiful, engaging, exceptional. And we love you. Next on our agenda is the Approval of the Consent Agenda, which consists of the Approval of the Minutes from the March 1st, 2022 Special Called Meeting, the March 1st, 2022 Regular Meeting, the March 18th, 2022 Emergency Called Meeting, and the Continuance of our Optional Mask Mandate. You all have had the opportunity to look over the minutes. May I have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda?
I make a motion we approve the Consent Agenda as presented.
A motion by Ms. Poplin. Could I have a second? Second by Ms. Watson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, no. The Consent Agenda has been approved. Thank you. You will see next on your agenda, the Department of Natural and Cultural Resources. I'm going to turn this over to you, Dr. Dennis.
Yeah, the Department of Natural and Cultural Resources isn't exactly what you think it is. One arm of it does deal with government agencies and their record schedules and destruction of records. And what they have here is standards that we can sign on to. They're highly recommended for how to treat records, especially records that are being destroyed. And it's just a good set of guidelines so that, you know, you don't have people going and just throwing records in the trash when they should be disposed of in certain ways. So my recommendation is that we approve these standards as written. Any questions?
Okay, you've all had a chance to look over this in your packet. Dr. Dennis is recommending that we approve these general records standards that are laid out before us. May I have a motion to approve this?
Motion to approve the records request.
Okay, I have a motion to approve the general records schedule as far as the destruction of the records. May I have a second? Okay, I had a motion by Mr. Lisk, a second by Ms. Watson. Any discussion?
Yes, just one quick comment, and that is, it's not about permanently destroying records. It's about, it's about when you do permanently destroy a physical record that you have an electronic copy.
Yeah, what it says, that's a good point. What it says is, this is the retention and destruction of records. So at some point, you don't have to retain the record when it's no longer useful. And it tells you exactly, yes, if, how you would destroy the record or if there has to be a backup and things like that. That's a good point.
Thank you. Mr. Graves, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, no. Okay, the motion has passed. Thank you, Dr. Dennis. Next, our committee reports. Facilities, Dr. Rufus Lefler.
I'll give you a report for the facilities. We had a meeting on March the ninth to kind of discuss what kind of properties we need to try to improve. We got these needs-based public school capital fund grant, and you have to apply for that, and they only gave us about eight weeks to do it. So Mr. Todd Bowers helped us review the facilities in the county, and the Facilities Committee met on March the ninth. And we got kind of an outline of what we wanted to present to the county commissioners because we're not the only ones that approve it. Before we can do any capital improvements, we have to go to the county commissioners for them to approve it because they hold our funds for any construction we do. So we met as a group, and we picked out four things that we were going to put into the system for this grant because everything that we want to do, they probably won't pick them all. Mr. Bauer said they'll probably pick one. If they pick two, that'll be great. But the four that we listed were, was East Albemarle Elementary School. We were going to make renovations to add, to increase the capacity by adding six classrooms and removing two mobile units. Now, the price was $2 million, and the county would have to put only 5% of that, so that's $99,000. And then at West Stanley Middle School, we were going to do the removal of six mobiles and replace them with brick-and-mortar classrooms. That was going to be $3,785,000. And the county would be responsible 5%, which was $180,000. Then we went to Indy Elementary School, removal of three units and the addition of eight classrooms, which was going to be $2.8 million, and the county was going to be responsible for $135 million. And West Stanley High School was going to remove eight mobile units and add ten classrooms and update the science labs and remove some asbestos. That was going to be $10 million, and the county would have to come up with $520,000. We had a meeting with, for the commissioners, Mr. Tommy Jordan, Mr. Lane Fur, Mr. Peter Ashudo, and County Manager Andy Lucas. And we talked to them about our vision of improving things with this money that we had. So we got together as a group, and we discussed it. And this was on, on a Thursday, I think. Then they called an emergency meeting of the county commissioners on Monday, and we got approval of it. In the past, sometimes we've had problems getting things done through the county commissioners, but we're going to try to work hand-in-hand with them to improve our whole county. So it really worked out. So Mr. Bauer's got all the forms filled out and all the materials in, in mid-March. And then by April the 15th, we'll find out whether we were picked for one of these grants. And I think it's just a great opportunity for our county if we get it approved. And it just shows that it's not just the school board that is doing something. We have to work with everybody in the community and the county to get things done. And I just think we're moving in a positive direction in our county, and things will be better for everybody. Thank you.
Madam Chair, can I add a comment? I just wanted to say that this is a two-year process. So this was the first round, and there will be a second round. So we didn't just single out specific schools this year. We just picked ones that we knew we could get done on a short-term basis. So there will be a second round of applications for this grant.
Yeah, there will be a second round of applications. And it is a highly competitive grant, and there were some that, projects that were easy, we could get in quickly. But there are over seventy projects that have been submitted. The amount of money coming from the state's just shy $400 million, but over $2 billion has actually been asked for. And a lot of the preference goes to tier-one counties, especially those who have already received agreements from a previous grant but have not yet started construction. So there's a lot of uncertainty exactly how DPI is going to fund these.
Thank you for bringing, providing that update, Dr. Lefler. I know that the Facilities Committee is working really hard. I also want to thank the commissioners that are working closely with us on this. Mr. Todd Bowers at the back. I appreciate all that you are doing in keeping us, you know, on top or, you know, letting us know how things are going. That deadline of April, the, what is it, fourteenth? Fourteenth, okay, it's going to be here real soon. And I know that I am excited to see if one of these is chosen and hopefully maybe more. But to all of you that are serving on that Facilities Committee, and I know that's Dr. Lefler, Carla, Dustin Lisk, again, our Superintendent, and Mr. Todd Bowers, thank you, thank you for your hard work and what you're doing. Thank you, Dr. Lefler. Next is Finance, Mr. Dustin Lisk.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We've had a busy couple of weeks in finance. We met on March the 29th to discuss a few things. A couple of the main items were the local budget requests coming up for fiscal year '22, '23, and our teacher supplements. Coming out of that first meeting into the second meeting today, the committee, we're going to have three votes come to the board out of the committee for approval. The first of those regarding teacher supplements is the Finance Committee decided to move teacher supplements from a current flat-dollar basis to a percentage of pay. This will create a, sort of a tiered system. If you're already receiving a certain level, we're going to hold no one harmless, meaning that you will not lose any supplement that you have now. Part of that budget roughly equates to about 4.5% of our overall local funds budget that we provide from a county. So, you know, if everything stayed the same, that percentage would be around 4.5%. Moving into today, and part of the budget request to the county is to increase that supplement to 6%. So the board's going to have a vote before them to move to a percentage-of-pay system from a flat-dollar basis. The second part of that approval coming out of the committee will be within our budget requests for local funds, capital outlay, and local current expense. Currently, that is a preliminary estimate. Mr. Dudley and his office have worked very hard on that. The Superintendent and the Finance Committee consisting of Mr. Graves, myself, and Mrs. Watson. So I think it's April 8th, Mr. Dudley, is when that preliminary budget is due for discussion with the county commissioners. I'm sure there'll be some tweaks to that, and then we will hopefully finalize that budget by May the 5th. That's roughly about $14.7 million for local funds. Another 3.4, call it, in capital outlay is what we're going to request for, for that fiscal year. Additionally, part of that budget request would help move our classified pay scale to $15 per hour. That was a mandate from the state that the county is going to have to fund. So we're looking at ways to make sure that we can pay that. We'll have those discussions, but we will be moving $15 an hour for classified pay scale. But the two approvals coming out of that, the preliminary budget request to go to the county commissioners, and the tiered teacher supplement moving from a flat-dollar basis to a percentage of pay. And then the last part of that is currently, teacher supplements are paid twice a year. I believe the first one is in June, and the second one's in December. We're going to, December, then June, but we're going to move that December date up to November so that the supplements can be paid prior to the holiday season. That will also be an action presented to the board for approval. So we'll have three votes coming out of Finance. Thank you.
Okay, are you saying you want to do this in three? Okay, all right, here's what I would like for you to do, Mr. Lisk. It is coming out of committee, so will you state the first motion, and then I'm going to ask for a second?
I move to, coming out of committee, as a motion to move from a, move from a flat-dollar basis teacher supplement to a tiered teacher supplement of percentage of pay, holding no one harmless at 5%. no one harmless at 5%.
At 5%. Okay, Board members, you have heard this coming out of committee. Could I have a second? A second by Mr. Graves. Any discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
Hope, do we have the exact wording of the motion? I thought we, do we have that? Right, do we have it here? Cause I don't, I don't see that motion here.
The motion that Mr. Lisk just made.
Right.
That's from the March 29th. Yeah.
Bear with us.
Do you want, do you want Hope to read that? She's got it.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, Hope, will you read that, please?
On a motion by Anthony Graves and seconded by Vicki Watson, the committee approved making a recommendation to the full Board to move from a tiered system to a percentage-based system starting at 5% and hold harmless anyone that is below 5% beginning the '22-'23 school year.
So, can we replace the language of the motion? I just wanted to be very clear, cause that is important. Do you have a problem with that?
I, I don't, maybe I misspoke, but I thought that's exactly what I said.
I think it was in so many words.
Yeah, it was, in so many words, but, but it's a little bit.
We will go with, we will go with what Hope has said.
That sounds good.
Okay?
Thanks. And what I, just, so with additional comment here, just so everybody understands, one of the complaints that, that employees of Stanley County Schools made over the years was they had a lot of complaints about the tiered system. And without going into all the details, we reviewed it in the Finance Committee meeting, but it was, you could go 10 years without getting an increase. And, you know, so obviously, that wasn't really acceptable to anybody. So, the Finance Committee reviewed it all and Mr. Dudley did the analysis to move to a percentage. So, anytime your pay would increase, your supplement would increase accordingly, which I think is excellent. And the last part about hold harmless is that when we decided to make the recommendation to move to a percentage, it was possible that some people, based on the previous scale, would actually get less money. So, then we said, that's what this hold harmless provision is about. So, no one is going to lose any money with this change. Just so that's very clear, because when we, when we mention words like this, you know, every employee, I'm an employee, I wanna know exactly what the details are. So, the, to summarize, this is good. This is, it's moving to a percentage basis. So, that means it's gonna be tied more directly to increases in your pay and you will not lose money in the process. So, cool, thanks.
Okay, we've had a motion, we've had a second, and we've had discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Okay, this part passes. Okay, now, the second part, Mr. Lisk.
The second motion I will make is to move the teacher supplements to be paid in November and June.
Okay, we have a motion?
Second.
Okay, teacher supplements being moved to, being paid in November and June. A second by Ms. Poplin. Any discussion?
Yeah, a quick comment on that. This was a request by teachers. So, this is, you know, this was a request that teachers brought to the central office to Mr. Dudley, and then he brought it to the Finance Committee meeting with his recommendation. And we obviously agreed. And it's gonna help people because you get your money before the shopping season starts, which was part of the reason why people requested that to be paid a little bit early. So, that made total sense.
The public is not aware, there's a long break in teacher pay right there at Christmas time, so.
Okay, we've had a motion, we've had a second, we've had discussion. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, no. Okay, this part passes. And then, is there a final part, Mr. Lisk?
Yes, thank you. The last motion would be to approve the preliminary local fund budget request, capital outlay, and local current expense.
Repeat that one more time.
Approve the preliminary local fund budget request, capital outlay, and local current expense.
Okay, we've had a motion to approve that preliminary budget and what all it encompasses. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second by Mr. Graves. Any discussion? All in favor?
Oh, just, I'm sorry, I was trying to hit the button here. Just to, some clarity on this as well, part of the process involves going out to the principals and administrators out in the school system to request feedback from them, what do you need in various areas? And so, we stressed this in the Finance Committee, that this process was done and, and it was done twice. So, the only reason I mentioned this is it's very important that, you know, people understand that the Board is involving, and actually, I would say the central office, and Mr. Dudley's involving the administration. And that process is supposed to go out and solicit requests from the teachers as well to make sure that we're getting the money that they need into the budget request. Doesn't mean we're gonna be able to get it all, but at least we wanna make sure that it's recognized in the request, so that was done.
Thank you, Mr. Graves. Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, no. Okay, then this part passes as well. So, I think everything you brought out of committee now has passed, Mr. Lisk. Thank you. And thank you again for your hard work. You've met several times and I appreciate what the Finance Committee is doing and working so closely with Mr. Dudley and our Superintendent. So, Dustin Lisk, Anthony Graves, Vicki Watson, thank you so much. Next is our instructional program, Mr. Bill Sorenson.
Yes, we met on March 29th. Two things to talk about, our Growth Recognition Proposal, which is a program to recognize the schools that show the highest growth, teacher effectiveness. That, that's, that's in the works and the central office folks are working on that. And also, we're going to, I'm gonna defer to Dr. Amy Blake Lewis. Couple minutes, she's gonna tell y'all about ed direction. It's a program I think's very important. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sorenson. Again, I appreciate those that are on your committee as well. I wanna make sure I call the names, so I've got you and Ms. Poplin and Dr. Lefler. So, we've just been busy, busy with all of these committee meetings and I just wanna bring attention to those in the audience, thanking, thanking all of you up here for your hard work. Next, we have Marketing, Community Engagement, and Safety, Mr. Anthony Graves.
Thank you. So, one of the interesting things, as Ms. Melissa Smith mentioned during her presentation, is her work in involving different entities and resources within the community, businesses, organizations, to help find resources for students that are struggling. And it's an ongoing process. As she just mentioned, this is new. There's been a whole bunch of different areas that she's been focused on and that is an important part. So, there was an event that Board Member Carla Poplin was participated in, that was hosted by Ms. Smith at the E. Waddell Center. That was fantastic. And Ms. Poplin was there with the NEMI project. And if you saw on the slideshow that featured Ms. Smith on every slide, there was a long list of entities that she had called out. Most of those entities, if not all of them, were represented. And one of the things that we're gonna look into is, as a school system, and this ties in with the Policy Committee that Carla Poplin heads, there are some certain restrictions in the policies right now as far as what information we can provide if it's not a direct resource of the school system. So, we're gonna take a look at that so that we can try to add that to our website to get these resources out to people. One of the things that I learned when I was participating in that meeting was, as an observer, was how many resources there are, amazing resources, and most people don't know about them, which is unbelievable, including from the Aggregative Center. So, when, we'll announce the next committee meeting, we'll share some of that information in that committee meeting, cause there's, there's a ton to share. And then, I also wanted to note real quick here from the presentation, that, bear with me, one second, please. Scrolling through all my notes here. Okay, well, I may add that in my final comments, but we are gonna have a, a meeting here, probably, hopefully, next week, and we'll announce that through the regular channel, social media. And if, any, anyone is welcome to come out. One of the other things that we wanna talk about is that group, the idea of putting together a community engagement group that was discussed at the event at North Stanley that we had that was a very positive outcome. We wanna look at how we can do that across the whole county so that we don't just do it in North Stanley, but we do it across the whole county because the challenges vary from school to school and from age group to age groups. And we wanna make sure that we have the community representatives best as possible. And also, Chairman Gibson, I know she's not prepared to talk about it right now, but has reached out to me about having workshops about some of these community engagement-related topics. So, I wanted to let people know that this is a high priority for the Board.
Thank you, Mr. Graves. And thank you to your committee with you and Ms. Poplin and Ms. Watson. Certainly, Ms. Smith at the back is such a huge part of that and all of her team, all of her team back there with Ms. Flo and Ms. Pennington. I don't wanna leave anybody out. Sam? Okay, Sam, okay, waving. Thank y'all, thank you. This is an important committee, so I, I appreciate this. Thank you, Mr. Graves. Our next committee personnel, Ms. Watson.
No report.
Okay, thank you. Policy, we always have something. Ms. Carla Poplin.
I'm just glad everybody else had a really long report today too, besides just me. And we met on March 17th and of course, I have a long list, but I do have two sections that are gonna have a vote required, so I'll just read that section and then ask for the vote, if that's okay. Policies for final approval tonight are Policy 6100, Goals of Student, Student Health Services. New Policy 6110, Organization of Student Health Services. Policy 6120, Student Health Services. Policy 6125, Administering Medicine to Students. Policy 6140, Student Wellness. Policy 6400, Goals of the Purchasing Function. Policy 6401/9100, Ethics and Purchasing Function. New Policy 6402, Participation by Historically Under-Utilized Business. Policy 6410, Organization of the Purchasing Function. 6420, Contracts with the Board. 6421, Pre-Audit Certification. New Policy 6425, Continuing Contracts. 6430, Purchasing Requirements for Equipment Materials and Supplies. 6441/9121, Bidders List. 6442, Vendor's List. New Policy 6450, Purchase of Services. 6560, Disposal of Surplus Property. 2300 Board Meetings and 2330 Board Meeting Agenda. And I do need a vote, those are for final approval.
Okay, so, these are the policies for final approval. Ms. Poplin has already basically made the motion for us. All I need is a second to approve these policies for their final approval?
Second.
Have a second from Mr. Sorenson. Any discussion? Those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, no. So, this has been approved.
And then, the next section are just policies to be rescinded. So, 3196-A, Healthy Active Children. 4115, Student Health Services. 4120, Medicines. 4125, First Aid. 4130, Accidents. 4150, Psychological Testing. 6515, Authorization of Superintendent Act for the Board. 6030, School Wellness. 6600, Purchasing Authority. 6605, Purchase Orders and Contracts. 6610, Change Orders. 6615, Maintenance of Bidders List. 6620, Vendor Relations. 6625, Specifications. 6630, Purchase of Equipment Materials. 6645, State Purchasing Requirements for Equipment Materials and Supplies. 7220, Individual School Accounts. 7220-R, Individual School Accounts Regulations and Procedures. 7400, Contract Administration. 7600, Disbursements. 7610, Pre-Audit Certification. 7620, Payment of Bills, Invoices, and Other Claims. 7630, Board Authority to override Finance Officer. So, I just need a vote to rescind those.
And Ms. Ms. Poplin has already made basically the motion, bring that out of committee to be rescinded. So, now, a second, please. Okay, a second by Mr. Graves. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Okay, these policies have been rescinded, it's been approved.
I have one more list. All right, so, we have policies that are now to be tabled for 30 days and these should be in your packets. So, that's Policy 7100, Recruitment and Selection of Personnel. New Policy 7110, Information Provided by Applicant or Employee. Policy 7120, Employee Health Certification. 7130, Licenseur. New Policy 7210, Staff Involvement in Decision Making. 5026-7250, Smoking and Tobacco Products. 7260, Occupational Exposure to Bloodborne Pathogens. 7262, Communicable Diseases with Employees. 7265, Occupational Exposure to Hazardous Chemicals in Science Laboratories. Policy 5024-6127-7266, Emergency Epinephrine Auto-Injector Devices. New Policy 5028/6130-7267, Automated External Defibrillator. Policy 5027/7275, Weapons and Explosives Prohibition. Policy 5030, Community Use of Facilities. So, those are to be tabled for the next 30 days.
We don't need to vote on those, they're just gonna be tabled.
And I just wanna.
And all of you have those.
Yeah, I just wanna say thank you to my Policy Committee and to Hope. This can be kinda tedious, but we're, we're getting through it. Thank you.
You are getting through it and I know, I know it's, I know it's tough and all, but thank you, Ms. Poplin and Mr. Sorenson, Ms. Watson. Hope you are always there. Dr. Dennis, Dr. Keisha Kong, thank you for what you're doing. Next up on the agenda is Curriculum and Instruction. I'm gonna turn this over to you, Dr. Amy Blake Lewis.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do have just a couple of items to share with the Board this evening. First, I would like to just remind you all that we are in the midst of our Cognia Accreditation Process. This is a five-year process that we go through with an outside agency that assesses the functions within our district and provides us feedback on the quality of the services that we provide to our community and to our students. This started with some student, staff, and parents participating in surveys. Then, our district office staff and school staff provided lots of documentation of all of the different work that we are doing in the district within three domains, which are Leadership, Learning, and Resources. And then, finally, this week, we have had lots of interviews being conducted virtually. So, district leadership, principals, teachers, parents, students, community partners, and of course, you, the Board of Education, have all been part of that interview process. It is going well and we will have some preliminary findings presented to us tomorrow around lunchtime. And I look forward to being able to share that full report with the Board in about six weeks. So, just wanted to give you the update on that. And the other thing I have for you this evening is regarding ed direction. That is something that Mr. Sorenson alluded to in his committee report. I would invite you to turn. I would invite you to turn to your committee documentation under the notes for the instructional committee meeting, and in that section, you will see some information regarding Ed Direction. They are a company that we would like to contract with to provide some services at Albemarle Middle School and Albemarle High School. If you look with me on this documentation, I will read to you some of what Ed Direction believes and what their functions are. Ed Direction believes that the primary goal of education is to develop individuals who thrive academically, socially, physically, and emotionally. They believe that educators possess an undeniable power to change students' lives. They believe that teachers and school leaders can become even more impactful working alongside external partners who promote self-evaluation, professional learning, and growth, and they believe that together we can achieve more. They do this through a deep understanding of the strengths and areas for improvement in culture, leadership, and teaching in their targeted schools. They will narrow a focus to the most impactful improvements that will help them to focus and create an actionable, week-by-week plan to address any of those deficits they encounter in the school. They will deliver job-embedded professional learning using adult brain science to small and large groups, and they will provide some direct coaching to enhance the adult mindset and the implementation of that plan of action that they develop. Overall, this program strives to shift school climate and culture by creating a durable mindset and shifting behaviors. So when my CNI team were looking at some possible interventions to put into place at Albemarle Middle and Albemarle High School, this is a company that rose to the top in all that we were looking at. If you continue to scroll through your packet, you'll see that this process is rolled out in phases. The first is the school master story development. This was completed with input from community stakeholders, staff members of the school, leadership of the school, and so that is a process that is ongoing right now. You'll also see that there will be some summer work that will be conducted with administration at each site, and then there will be constant support throughout the coming school year to make sure that this work of shifting behaviors and looking at the culture of that school and the community and providing them with an improved school climate will be the focus and the goal over the coming year. I do require board approval on this before the superintendent can sign off on that contract for the coming school year, so at this time, I would ask for a motion to do so.
I want to say just one discussion. We did get some recommendations from other school districts on how this company and this process works. One that was near us that gave a good recommendation, showed school improvement, was Thomasville High School, which has a population, it's very much like-
Very similar, demographically speaking.
Yes, and it worked well for them. And so just wanted you to know, we did our due diligence with looking at, you know, some references before we decided on who to use.
Thank you, Dr. Amy Blake Lewis. At this time, board members, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the contract service agreement with Ed Direction for the 2022-23 school year.
Madam Chair, I move that we do accept the contract Ed Direction for the coming school year.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Sorensen, a second. A second by Ms. Watson. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, a comment, a quick question first. You mentioned the stakeholders.
Yes, sir.
Can you give us an idea of like the community stakeholders that were involved?
Yes, sir. Last Friday, the date was March the 25th, we convened a group at the Oakboro Park Facility to do a retreat where representatives from Ed Direction came together with staff members from the school, leadership from the school, and Ms. Melissa Smith, our Director of Community Engagement Dropout Prevention, made contact with various members of the Albemarle community, and so they were all present and part of the activities that Ed Direction had put in place for the day. They talked about beliefs and values. They got to know each other better, and Ed Direction began that process of collecting that information so that they can basically develop that story that Albemarle Middle and Albemarle High School want to tell about their school. We know that there have been some misperceptions and misconceptions regarding our city schools, and so this is one way that we can address that and repaint a new picture for those two schools.
So, and the reality is that we're investing in this, and we're going to invest in this is because there are challenges at these schools, too. And sometimes you need to get the right solution for the right challenge, and we recognize that as a board, and are willing to make the investment in it. What I want everybody to know, because we had talked about this as a board earlier, is that it isn't like we make this investment and we hope it works. There are going to be reviews to make sure that we learn what kind of progress gets made, because we don't know. I mean, what does success look like? We're going to see what, we're going to get feedback from people who are participating in the program, everybody, the students and the faculty and staff, so that we can see how progress is being made.
Yes, sir. Part of that coaching aspect that is part of this contract, Ed Direction sends in their licensed coaches who have extensive experience in doing school turnaround work, and so they will have regular communication with myself and/or Dr. Dennis regarding the progress that is being made.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Graves.
Thank you.
All in favor of approving this Ed Direction comments? Say aye. Those opposed, no? Okay, then this has been approved. Dr. Amy Blake Lewis, thank you for like going above and beyond somewhat. I mean, I know you looked at other things, as Dr. Dennis said. I know that you planned that event, you, Ms. Melissa Smith, others. And I know, board members, we were invited to attend. I could not attend, but as you get into this, is that something that board members might also could drop by and?
Yes, ma'am, because there will be ongoing meetings that they will hold with grade levels and/or the entire faculty. There will be opportunities for the community to continue to provide input on the direction of the school. It is a process, and I know that sometimes people become frustrated with a process, but this is so that everything will take hold and that it will be long-lasting. So I do ask for patience from the community as we go through this process, but we are making some changes and making shifts, and at first, it may not be a visible shift, but there are things that are going to be just under that surface that we are addressing with the hopes that the visible picture when we are here this time next year, that we will be able to mark that progress.
Thank you. Thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, we have auxiliary services. Mr. Terry Dudney.
I'm actually let Todd exhibit this that we have on agenda for y'all's approval.
Okay.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. As you know, the Esser funds that we had, one of the line items in there was for improvement of HVAC facilities and air quality. And in that spirit, tonight, what I'm bringing before you is a bid asking you to enter a contract with Garmin Mechanical for $758,000 for the replacement of the unit ventilators at Baden Elementary School and the installation of bipolar ionization rods. We had two bids before you. Only two contractors bid the project. We put it out twice, advertised it twice, but received only two bids. And so after a second advertisement, we were allowed to go, you know, with only two bids. Being the total value of this, like I said, this will require board approval, and the board will have to enter into this contract. But it is using Esser funds, PRC 181, I think it is.
Hi. Hey, board members, you have heard that presentation, so I would like to entertain a motion that we approve the Baden Elementary School Unit Ventilation Replacement, which is being given to Garmin Mechanical.
I'll make a motion to approve the proposal, Garmin Mechanical.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Leisk, a second. Second by Ms. Poplin and Ms. Watson. Any discussion?
I have a question. Esser funds, how has this sort of fallen to the Esser funds?
In the Esser III category, criteria, there was some funding that could be used in Esser III for the replacement and repairs of HVAC systems for purification of the air quality in our schools. So this is part of that category.
This system has that ionization component that's supposed to kill particles and things in the air, viruses, bacteria, such beneath that requirement.
I got it. Okay, all right, I get it. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Graves. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, no? Okay, this has passed. Thank you, Mr. Dudney, and thank you, Mr. Bowers. Mr. Dudney, you do not have anything else for us, do you? Okay. I think it is time now to move to our superintendent's comments.
Well, we just did conclude our third quarter, moving into our fourth quarter, so we're in the home stretch, and as you know, spring break is among us and won't be long. Just a couple of things I want to note. This week is Assistant Principals Week, so I want to recognize all our assistant principals, how hard they work in our schools from day to day, and just the great job that they do. The fourth, it was School Librarian Day, and thank you to all our media specialists. This is Autism Awareness Month. The 22nd is Earth Day, and we also have, I think that's it.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Dennis. Board member comments? I'm going to start with Dr. Leffler, please.
I would just like to recognize everybody that got the awards tonight. It was great that we had it from the arts and the spelling bee people. That was exceptional, because I would have never thought about entering the spelling bee when I was growing up. I was happy to spell my name and such, so that's really exceptional, and to get up in front of everybody and be spelling the words, that is great. And then Mr. Feick, I also remember him when he taught my kids, and he's aged like the rest of us and still doing an excellent job, because my kids really enjoyed his teaching. And then the lady that's going to Poland, that's excellent, because we need to remember what's happened in our history and don't ever forget it. Then also, visiting the schools, it's just amazing what a teacher has to do. It's enough what a mother has to do. They have one or two or three kids, but a teacher is in the room all day. They've got 25 kids. They've got kids at different levels, and they've got an educational plan on each of them. So they have to dress each child, and it's amazing. I don't see how they do it, and that's enough, but then when they get home, they have to make a lesson plan for tomorrow, and then they have to grade their papers and everything. So it's really amazing what our teachers do, and it's not just our teachers, it's the teaching assistants, it's the principals, it's everybody involved, and it's just a big, massive machine going. And I just think with the COVID happening, it's put us behind, but I think we're catching up very slowly, but I'm just proud of our community, what they're doing with our school system at this time, and I look for great things in the future.
Thank you, Dr. Leffler. Mr. Graves?
So, thank you. I remember now, I found the note that I had made. I was watching a video last week about, because in recent news, we've seen plane crashes, and I was reading, watching a video about an analysis of a plane crash, and what was important was they said that a plane doesn't crash because of one thing happening. It is a whole number of systems in that plane have to fail for a plane to fall out of the sky. And so earlier, when Melissa Smith was talking about the dropouts, a dropout, a student dropping out, is the result of a long process of poor engagement. I think that's what she said. I missed the last part, and I just made the poor engagement part up, but it is, what it is, dropout is a result of a whole number of failures. Failures within the school system, failures within the home, failures within the community, failures within society. And coming on the heels of COVID, one of our speakers, who I appreciate, all three of the speakers coming up, and I think it was Jasmine Scott that mentioned, about the significant issue of learning loss, the learning gap that we have now. We had it before COVID. It's gotten much worse, and it even has a much higher emotional component to that as well. Maybe we didn't have as much of before COVID because of remote learning and all of the stresses around quarantines and things like that. So we've talked about it numerous times on the school board. We recognize the challenges the last summer and this summer. I know the school has plans to try to deal with this issue, but in a broader sense, the work that Melissa Smith and the folks in the executive team and the Student Services Department are focused on is dealing with trying to make sure that all of the system components within Stanley County schools are good and solid, and that's the way that we're going to be able to address and reduce dropouts here in Stanley County. And so I just thought about that, and it's right, dropouts don't happen. They don't wake up one day and decide they're not going to go to school. It takes years for a student to get into that position, and it's sad, because I was watching another video, I shared it around, where, I don't know if you guys ever remember this, Jerry Springer, but they had a, that's not going to date anybody or age anybody, but there was an episode that was going around, and it was one of these videos, it's like, don't watch it, it'll make you cry, so of course you watch it, and then you're like, you know, pretending not to cry. But it was a little kid, and this kid was very, very, he has serious discipline issues. I mean, he had a single mom, and he was on Jerry Springer, because this kid was probably a Hellion. And the reality was, they had a drill sergeant coming in, and this drill sergeant was hollering at the kids, trying to scare them straight. And the whole thing was, he said, you know, the kid just wanted a dad, right? That's what it was, and then everybody's like, oh crap, and the, you know, drill sergeant hugged him. And that's the thing, it's little things, these kids are acting out because they need something, and whether we like it or not, sometimes they can't get that at home, and they need to get those resources at school. So I don't apologize for trying to help in those kinds of situations. I don't think anybody up here would, and it aggravates when sometimes I hear people that don't think about that kind of stuff. And then the last thing is this. The reason why I ask about the Esser funds paying for this HVAC system, I did it just to triple-check. It's because when we get these Esser funds, these Esser funds are going to go away, and so we need to make sure that we invest that Esser funding that we're thinking about the future, because if we invest it in something that's a recurring cost, we are going to have to replace that money from somewhere, whether it be the federal government, another program, the state government, or most likely, it's going to have to come from local funding, which is the local taxpayers. So that's why I voted for it, because it's a significant expense, but it's a one-time expense. So that's important. When we're making these decisions, it's not, we're not just rubber-stamping things, or we're not, because I immediately, I wanted to triple-check that it was going to be able to solve that problem, that we're not just using those Esser funds as a slush fund, but that there's thought behind how we're spending the money. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Graves. Mr. Leisk?
Thank you, Madam Chair. In my short time on the board, roughly five months, I've spoken with many parents who have expressed concerns of critical race theory, concerns that CRT has entered North Carolina schools and has the potential to enter our schools. Experts have varying opinions on the exact definition of CRT. Nevertheless, we cannot allow any form of discrimination in our schools and must ensure equality for all students. As one voice on this board, I will stand- As one voice on this board, I will stand strong against this curriculum and this teaching to ensure all students get treated equally and without discrimination of any kind. I will work with our Madam Chair, Vice Chair, board members, and superintendent to discuss a potential resolution to further recognize the equality and rights of all persons and to ensure dignity and non-discrimination in our schools. Resolutions do not represent policy or legal action, only our view. Therefore, I will work with our Policy Committee to discuss language that could possibly be implemented to prevent this type of material to enter our schools. We are fortunate to have great administrators and teachers that focus on learning and not ideology. I'm proud of our schools and our leadership. I am proud of our Policy Committee, who you can see is doing a fantastic job. That is a real job, and I'm confident with decisions that come out of this committee. However, as a governing body, it is our responsibility to enact our district's vision through policy and to provide the best opportunities for all students in a safe and conducive learning environment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Leisk. And Ms. Poplin?
Well, thank you for that, Dustin, I appreciate that. It's a process. We can definitely talk about what you're wanting. So I want to congratulate our assistant principals, since it's Assistant Principal Week, and recognize our school librarians. It is Autism Awareness Month, that holds a dear place for me, as many of you know. West Stanley Concert Band, thank you so much for your, your performance tonight. That was a nice change of pace, and I really appreciate that, they did a wonderful job. I want to congratulate the Spelling Bee champion, Ms. Catalina. Ms. Howell, I've known Meredith for a while, and she puts everything she has into her classroom. Her, she's always going to workshops, seeking out extra training, so I was not surprised that she came in saying that, you know, she was seeking more knowledge, and I wished her the best of luck in Poland, and can't wait to see what she brings back. The Arts Educator of the Year, Mr. Feick, congratulations. To the three people who spoke tonight, I appreciate you guys taking the time to come out. Ms. McManus, Mr. Howell, and Ms. Scott, thank you so much for coming and sharing your concerns and questions with us tonight. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Poplin. Ms. Watson?
Well, I would like to also, everything everyone said, I agree, and I would also like to, this Ed Direction, I attended that last Friday, and I was very pleased, and the people that were there, it was an attention all the time. I mean, something was going on all the time, different things that they were doing, and I even joined in with some of the games, it was a lot of fun, but I think, I think the people that were there are really understanding what we're trying to do for Albemarle High School and Albemarle Middle School. We want this to be a better school for our kids that are, that go there. I think this is going to be a really, really good thing for them. I was very impressed, very impressed with that. So hopefully, things will go well. Thank you, County Office, for all that you do, and Dr. Dennis Duncan, for all that you do with everything going on.
We do appreciate him. And Melissa Smith, I fell in love with her when she came to Albemarle High School. The first time I saw her, we just clicked. She is an amazing lady, and she does amazing things, and thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Watson. And Mr. Sorenson?
You're always apprehensive before I say my name.
No, I am not.
You should be. I'd like to thank the people that came out and spoke today passionately. The safety and future of all of our kids is, it's, it's pretty important to me, too, and Ms. Melissa, we're kindred spirits in a different way. She's like a dove, and I'm like a hawk, we want the same things, though. But I do have, I do have a couple of questions, and these are not rhetorical questions, these are questions for the North Carolina General Assembly, Stanley County Commission, every single body in this state that considers themselves an adult. We've got 8,300, approximately 8,300 kids in Stanley County. How many can we afford to lose as a society? How many can we lose to dropping out and basically throwing our lives away, because that's what the statistics say they're doing? The Facility Committee hit me, they hit me right in the heart with what they're trying to do with that grant money. Most folks don't know this, but North Carolina has not passed a statewide capital bond, statewide bond, or even given it to the voters in over 30 years. There's $8 billion in needs in our buildings, okay? The other day, I'm driving down the road there in Albemarle, and it got rough. The weatherman said those winds were 60, 70 miles an hour. I'm an old dude, I pulled off, went into Wendy's, okay? As soon as I walk in the door, the phone blows up. Tornado warning, Stanley County. The first thing to come to my mind is, where are our kids? Where are Stanley County's kids? Where are these 8,300 kids? Are they in nice, secure, brick and mortar buildings? And I'm not talking about there's no guarantees, but I mean, let's face it, or are they in these mobile units? So the fact that our Facilities Committee is trying to take those, let's get the kids out of those mobile home type situations when the, when the rain comes. Melissa Smith, I am so far behind you in what you're trying to do. If we, we can't lose a single child, this dropout thing is, we've got a great dropout rate in Stanley County, but you know what? Till it's 100%, I'm not happy. So I don't want to preach or anything, but you, you folks that come out and talk about wanting to reach out and make things, make things, you're talking to me, because we can't afford to lose one, not one single child. So I don't want to preach or pontificate, but I'm sitting there in Wendy's in the bathroom, because it's blowing pretty hard out there, and I'm on my knees praying for our kids. I want everybody to start caring about them at that same level. I want our, I want our state government to wake up and stop sitting on money that they have contributed to making our schools better. And finally, I want to say thank you to everybody in Stanley County that voted for that Save Schools tax, that tax increase back four or five years ago. It not only has made our schools safer for security reasons, it's helped to make them safer for these storm situations, too, and it continues to make a huge difference. You got me all, you just every time, Melissa, you get me all preaching, what wound up? We on the same page, though, we have to save every student. If this society is going to survive, that's the most important thing, is that we save every single student. And to our guest speakers, thank you for coming out and talking to us. I want to hear, I want to hear what you got to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sorenson. I'm just going to echo just a little bit everything that everyone has said. Certainly, all of the winners that were recognized tonight, congratulations to them. For our speakers, thank you for coming out and speaking. For the West Stanley Concert Band, that was, that was really special, and I'm just going to go ahead and request them again. Dr. Dennis?
[laughing]
I really, I would like to request them, maybe some other schools as well, that, that was wonderful. You know, I, and for our assistant principals, recognizing them for all that they do, I appreciate them and what they do. I love going out visiting the schools. I think all of us up here do. I mean, doesn't that just make your day? It really does, and so, can I go ahead and tell them our next visits? Dr. Dennis? Okay, going to get on the calendar. We are working on next week, board members, trying to visit a few more of our schools. So, yes, sir, yes.
Sorry to interrupt you, but I wanted to give you a little bit of congratulations, because the feedback in the community on the board visits and your leadership in doing so, has, board visits to the schools, I believe is really making an impact and resonating. So thank you.
Good. Thank you. I appreciate that, and we do work hard. Dr. Dennis and I trying to, well, between everything, sometimes that pops up, you know, we're trying to schedule these visits, and then trying to schedule visits where we all are available, that's just kind of sometimes impossible to do, but we do try to schedule what we can, and we are looking at visiting some schools for next week before the break. Our next board meeting is Tuesday, May the 3rd, 2022, and it will be held here in the Jean McIntyre Meeting Room at 7:00. And I know that we recessed from our closed session, so at this time, I'm just going to call our board back into closed session.